Okay, thanks. Good evening and welcome to the December thirteenth, 2016, meeting of the Town in Wareham Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Chairman Whiteside is not attending tonight, so as clerk, I become chairman pro tem. And earlier, we opened the meeting at six forty-five, chose Selectman Slavin to be clerk pro tem for the evening, and went immediately into executive session under General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. We've come out of that, and now we begin the public portion of our meeting. May we have a roll call for the record, please?
Roll call is Mr. Titlebaum is here, Mr. Tropiano, Mr. Scasiato, Mr. Slavin, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan. Mrs. Whiteside is out today.
Yep. Also, Town Council Bowen is not here tonight. Okay, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I say Mr. Sullivan.
Okay.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess he is. Oh, my God.
The frog.
Okay, announcements. Announcements. Selectman Scasiati, do you have any announcements for us tonight?
I do not.
Okay. Selectman Tropiano, do you have any announcements?
No, no announcements, mister.
Okay. Alan's got a couple in there, I guess.
Do you want to do this one?
Do you want me to do it?
I'll leave this one, let me do the others.
Yeah, okay.
First one, happy birthday, Mrs. Whiteside, Saturday. Happy birthday to you next week, right?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Oh, it's even love.
Tomorrow's your birthday?
Yeah.
Geez, we missed that.
Happy birthdays.
We could have done something really good if we had known ahead of time.
Exactly, and that's why you didn't.
Okay.
I see a few more grays on that beard.
Yeah, well, don't give me any more tonight.
We'll fix you next time. I got just, there's a meeting tonight, unfortunately, we were not able to go. It's over in Rochester at the, the senior citizens. I believe there's four communities, I think Duxbury is the leader, Plymouth, Kingston, I forget what the fourth one is. They're at Rochester, they've asked Rochester if they want to join their new regional dispatch that they're putting together. So this is something we talked about five to seven years ago, maybe, and it's actually happening, you know, next door to us. In Rochester, they're explaining that what they're going to do, costs, et cetera, and they have reached out to Rochester to see if they want to join. If this, we actually have, I believe, Mr. Barrett, who's the chair of the Prudential Committee for the Ferrin Water District, is there tonight, and he'll come back and get some information to the town as well. And I'm not sure we'd go that way, but maybe we go and start our own region, using Bourne, Marion, et cetera, Matipoiset. But it's happening anyway, so it's finally coming through. There's a lot of grant money and different programs available if you do a regional dispatch, and it would save everybody money in the long term, so it's going to be very interesting to see how that works. That's it for me.
Okay, I have a couple of things. This is from Turning Point. It's the final push for Turning Point to assist over one hundred and eighty area families in need. If you are able to help, they are in need of the following items: food for the holiday meal and the school break, canned vegetables, potatoes, mac and cheese, snacks, gravy, canned soup, peanut butter, sweet potatoes. They're thanking those who donated previously, they do have enough turkeys and cranberry sauce, so just the canned goods and the packaged goods, please. Gifts, they are also in need of infant, toddler, and teen clothing, and several ten- to twelve-year-old boys are asking for new bikes and scooters. They'd also like people to donate time if they could. They will be at the old annex near the Wareham High School track across the way here, behind the old Boys and Girls Club, Thursday and Friday from four PM to seven PM organizing the, sort of the gift packages, and also Saturday from nine-thirty AM to four-thirty PM, so if you've got some time, it would be nice to go over there and help some of the less fortunate people. I just want to briefly touch on something that happened, that's been happening over the past month with the Board of Health, and actually going back beyond then. In May twenty fifteen, the Board of Health passed a regulation limiting motel stays to twenty-one days. That was eighteen months ago plus. Since that time, the health agent, members of the Board of Health, even members of the Board of Selectmen have gone out and looked at some of these places, seen the conditions some of these people lived in. The Board of Selectmen at the time supported the regulation and still do. It was meant essentially to send a message to the state to stop parking families in the motels, including kids, as housing, because it was not transitional housing, they were permanently putting these people in there. The state was paying a hundred dollars a day to warehouse people in there, that's three thousand dollars a month. The bylaw was essentially modeled on, I believe, Dartmouth, and also there's a similar one in Bourne. Under state law, people aren't supposed to live in motels anyway. So this was nothing new, nothing excessive. Notwithstanding that, they spent over a year researching the issue, had asked for rosters of people who had been staying in these places for a long time from the motel owners, only to discover that some of the rosters were not necessarily being honestly kept, nor were the motel owners sticking to their promises to not admit any more long-term stays. So when the health agent discovered this in the fall, he asked the Board of Health to send out a letter to the motel owners saying, you know, enough is enough. Essentially, what they were looking for was stick to the rosters you have, don't admit any more people in, or there would be sanctions up until, including fines, or also non-renewal of the license if they continue to take in people and were not straightforward their rosters. Somehow or other, this letter got misconstrued into the notion that people were going to be chucked out into the cold as of December fifteenth. There's no such deadline. The health agent, nor the Board of Health, nor anybody else in town are desirous of making people homeless during the coldest time of the year. But the Board of Health is serious about complying with at least their intermediate interpretations of this regulation, and making sure that they don't admit any more long-term stay people in. That's, they're dead serious about that. So I'm just making this announcement to let people know, because there's been quite a public, sort of, background firestorm going on about this, nobody's being thrown out in the cold. All the Mohills have to do is comply with the instructions of the health agent to maintain an active roster and not to increase the number of people who are there for long-term stays. So I just wanted to get that out there. And that's that. Now, let's see.
Mr. Chair?
We do have one more, that's right.
Well, there's two, there was, though, I received an email from the chief of police, and I'd like to read that in. The Wareham Police Department is proud to announce that the annual Stuff a Cruiser event, held on Saturday, December tenth, was a great success. Police cruisers parked at Target and Walmart, accepted toys from people of all ages, who graciously stuffed onsite cruisers with hundreds of toys, which were turned over to Dick Maloney Youth Foundation to be distributed to local families in need of assistance during the holiday season. Chief Kevin Walsh said the generosity of people donating toys was overwhelming, proving once again the compassion for others and the spirit of giving always comes through in Wareham, and is especially noticed when children donate toys to other children who may be less fortunate at this time of year. Officers collecting toys at Target and Walmart included officers Carl Baptiste, Richard Robideau, Chris Corner, John Akabuchi, Ashley O'Brien, Matthew Donovan, Ryan Turner, Sergeant Walter Correa, Lieutenant John Walsec, Lieutenant John Gerard, and Chief Walsh, along with Assistant Harbor Masters Jamie McIntosh and Michael McGuire. The generous efforts of all involved were greatly appreciated. The management employees of Target and Walmart, many of whom donated toys themselves, were also thanked for their involvement in the event and the opportunity given to Wareham PD to hold the event at the store locations. The Wareham Police Department is proud to hold this event in partnership with Dick Maloney Foundation to help bring joy to children of all ages, and we look forward to another successful Stuff a Cruiser event in 2017.
Thank you. Thank you for that report, and thanks to the Wareham Police Department for doing this as well as Target and Walmart. It's a really nice thing, and it's glad to see so many officers involved. One other announcement, we received word, I think it was last week, that the town is receiving a fifty thousand dollar feasibility study grant for Tremont Nail from Mass Development, which is the state agency that does brownfield redevelopment. Tremont Nail is now classified as a site in the DEP system, which makes us eligible for money from Mass Development to redevelop it as a brownfield, and also to do some other things. Previously, we've received ninety thousand dollars for the initial site investigation from Mass Development. This additional money will go for feasibility purposes, not for cleanup. It's meant to supplement and probably improve upon the report that was done in two thousand and nine, documenting the uses and so on and so forth, the potential uses of the site, reuses, and possible redevelopment. And I'd like Mr. Sullivan to expound a little bit more on this, but I also like to thank our recently appointed Director of Community and Economic Development and Planning, Kenneth Buckland. He's been working on this thing for months, and it's nice to see the fruits of his labors pay off like this. He did a great job on it.
And this is, you know, there's a lot of people have been working with us, including Serped, and we appreciate all their help. Mass Development, when looking at this, this will be a true feasibility study, including stakeholder outreach. It will also have public meetings and input and a true feasibility, so that's not, when they talk about a feasibility, it's not going to say, well, you could do this or that. It's going to actually see what the market wants in this area, what's working, and will give us a roadmap, and really a master plan for the Tremont Nail site. And that's one of the things that we're really excited about. We've already started with creating, it's still road, but the green space area there, including the benches and such, and, you know, we've been talking about getting the, some, I call them food trucks. Chairman Whiteside seems to use the term roach coach, but they're getting a festival down in there, and we're pretty excited. Also, let you know, I've started working with Massey Kayak to have them operating out of the site along the water, including granting them a license and seeing if we can do a long-term RFP. Right now, the metal building down there, the lease has ended, and I'd like to see if we could send that out for an RFP, and see if there's maybe better suited uses than just the, just storage of boats and such. So I have Mr. Menard looking through the building, seeing what the needs are, and, you know, if it needs a little bit too much work, then we'll put it out for boat storage for a little while, but there's potentially other operations that can be done as well. So I appreciate Mr. Starzak and the folks over at Mass Development for working with us, and it's been a few years trying to get this together, so it's nice when all the planning finally comes to fruition. I'm not, I'm not going to use the Hannibal eighteen term or anything like that, but...
I'm at Landover at Tremont, where the metal building is, might want to go back and look at the program that we talked about, it never got off the ground, about putting two buildings on the uplands there, which could be either affordable or assisted housing, which the town has a real need for.
Yep. Okay.
I guess we're done with that. Now, let's see.
Seven fifteen.
A hearing. Yep, we do.
I have no appointments, reappointments or interviews. Yes, citizen's participation, Angie's here, but not everybody's here.
Moved to open the hearing.
Well, actually, there's nobody here, so why don't we do citizen's participation? We do have one citizen here.
All right.
We don't have to open at seven fifteen, we just can't open it before, so.
Yeah, you know, that's...
Yeah. Citizen's participation, anybody here to speak to the board? You are here.
I am.
Come on up.
For a few moments.
Yep.
If I could please just leave these packets with you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, give them to...
I have homework for you.
Oh, boy.
Could you give this to Judy, please?
Yes.
If you would for me.
I'm not going that way tonight, though.
Nobody goes that way, ever.
These are packets for...
Thank you.
And she likes it that way.
The trip.
I have gifts to offer to you for next week. I was prepared to do it this evening, but I've been asked to delay it, the presentation with the gifts. So this is a packet with an overview of what the program was when we had the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary commemoration of Captain John Kendrick, and I would like you, if you would, please to look that over. There's also contact information on the last two pages for you, because Kishimoto Town Hall is waiting for an official response from you folks. So I will be back next week, if you would please, I respectfully ask that you put me on the agenda.
Yes, I'll make that request of Chairman Whiteside.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, and thank you for all your efforts and being our ambassador to Japan.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
We appreciate it. Okay, now we can talk about the hearing. This is on the application of Peterbilt from Massachusetts LLC, DBA Peterbilt of Southern Massachusetts, twenty-three eighty-one Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, for a Class One license. May we have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Moved.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiati. Roll call, vote, please. Clerk Slavin?
Yes.
Selectman Tropiano? Selectman Scasiati?
Yes.
Titlebaum? Yes. Four zero zero to open the hearing.
There's no one to give any, I think they were here last week. We deal with this last week?
We didn't have it last week.
Yeah, we did.
I've got the cards here.
Is this the gentleman from Peterbilt?
Yes, sir.
Come on down, sit right...
Come on down.
I've got, I've got everything here that's needed. The cards are here. Everything else is in place.
I confirmed with Chairman Whiteside earlier today that everything was all set here.
Insurance is in place, everything is set.
Yep, no.
How you doing?
Good evening.
How you doing?
Why don't you tell us what you want to do here?
We're going to sell a few trucks, fix a few trucks, and sell a few parts.
Okay, just identify your name and position for the record, if you would.
The general manager, Ronald Grace.
Okay, thank you. That sounds pretty straightforward.
Yeah, this is pretty clear.
Yeah. Is there anybody in attendance tonight who would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing none, is there anybody here tonight who would like to oppose the application? Also, none.
Move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiati. Roll call, vote. Clerk Slavin?
Yes.
Selectman Tropiano?
Yes.
Selectman Scasiati, yes. Titlebaum, yes. Okay, the hearing is closed, four zero zero.
Move we approve the application for Peterbilt of Massachusetts LLC, DBA Peterbilt of Southern Massachusetts, two-three-eight-one Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, for a Class One dealer's license.
Second.
Okay, motion by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiati. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Abstaining, none. You're all set, four zero zero. We'll have the paperwork ready for you tomorrow morning in the office.
Okay. Thanks a million.
That was a tough two minutes out of your life, huh?
That was tough.
Yeah.
It was a tough time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I've got renewals for two licenses, everything I got last week.
I believe one of them is not ready yet.
It says here that they're going to do the one as it is, because they're in the process of changing DBA. We'll get a new business certificate once that is done as well, so it's going to be all new paperwork.
All right, so they're going to come back and relisten under the new?
They've been paid twice.
If they want to do that.
You want to renew under this license, though?
That's what they're saying here.
They're renewing, but then they're going to come back with their new ownership and new whatever. Okay, that's up to them.
It could be, well, it could be after the first of the year is the problem, I think.
Yeah.
That's their ballgame.
It's a business decision, oh, well.
Just so the public know, this is the Ying Dynasty, which is doing business right now, still under China Garden.
We can't complain, it's a small fee.
Yeah, exactly.
[laughing].
Okay.
Okay, which one do you want to start with there?
We'll do Hong Kong Island Restaurant Inc., DBA Hong Kong Island, thirty thirty-five Cranberry Highway, East Wareham. Manager Martha Di Bella. And their hours are January second to April thirtieth, Sunday, twelve noon to eleven PM, Monday through Thursday, eleven thirty to eleven PM, Friday, Saturday, eleven thirty to one AM, on May first to January first, actually, December thirty-first, really. Sunday, twelve noon to twelve PM, Monday through Thursday, eleven thirty to twelve, and Friday and Saturday, eleven thirty to one AM.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to renew from Selectman Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, four zero zero, approved.
Next one, Mark Inc., DBA China Garden, twenty-two-six-five Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Manager Joe Mia Mark. And the hours will be Tuesday through Saturday, eleven AM to ten PM, Sunday, two PM to ten PM.
Second.
Okay, motion by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. Anything on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that one also approved, four zero zero. Takes care of licenses and permits, next up is town business. Discussion and vote on policy oh-three-oh-one parking prohibition, snow or weather emergency.
And that correction we asked was made in it, so we can go ahead and...
Yeah, you can go ahead and approve that.
Should I move we approve policy oh-three-oh-one parking prohibition as amended from last week?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the policy by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiati. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. It is adopted and changed. Okay, this one next, item B, discussion and possible vote on letter to the governor or legislators requesting delaying the provisions of the commercial marijuana sales section of the recently passed marijuana statute. I believe this is on at your request.
Yep. Okay, just a second here.
Yeah.
That has to be signed. Okay. Before I go into the details, I just want people to know that we're, some people got back information as if the board is looking to not follow through what was voted by the voters on this, it's not the case. We're just asking for some extra time, only because of certain issues, which I'll explain now. I'll read what we actually, what I'm asking people to send, and I've got a whole information on it, if I just go through it. We believe there are many major problems to overcome in order for question four to work effectively. The deadline of January first, twenty eighteen, to establish regulatory framework for the commercial marijuana industry seems unrealistic. The three-person cannabis control commission has insufficient time to build infrastructure needed. What happens if this commission fails to meet the January first deadline? What happens basically is everything goes into effect without any kind of structure or anything, which creates a problem. The major problems are the deadlines give local officials insufficient time to prepare for and to administer the law, the lack of any provisions for local control, the lack of regulations regarding homegrown provisions, the statute as written contains inadequate tax revenues. Just as an example, in Colorado, they basically believe they have a twenty-five percent state tax, and then the local communities get eight percent. State of Washington was thirty-seven percent, with a three-point-four local. The reason this is here is they basically figured out what it was going to cost them to run this program and everything else. When this particular provision was put into, to vote, you know, as a article this past year, and it went through this fall, this was written not by the legislature, not by any elected officials, this was written by the actual people who are running this business and coming out of the West. And when they did this, they wrote it in their favor, that's why the tax numbers and everything is so low, and why some of the provisions are there, especially on the personal use, et cetera, with no controls. Just an example, is on the controls and stuff, I think, if I remember right, I believe you're allowed to grow twelve plants, and if you figure out twelve plants for an individual in a year's time, it's approximately sixty thousand dollars worth of marijuana on the street.
I saw those numbers, I thought they were ridiculous. I mean, if you're good at growing weed, you can get about half a pound of bud off a plant. Don't ask me how I know these things from the seventies, but I do. You know, sixty thousand dollars worth a pot is, if we're talking two hundred dollars an ounce, we're talking, what, how many pounds? I mean, I just don't, I'm not buying their numbers.
Well, I'm just giving...
I think the letter's a little bit hysterical, to be honest with you. I think, I agree that the local tax should be higher, but...
Well, that's...
And the implementation.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I think, I think personally, I think over the course of time, that'll all get shaken out anyway.
I do, too.
And these numbers will all change afterwards, anyway. I don't think the numbers are written in stone. I think, just like every other program that's ever come in, they're going to eventually amend those numbers. I mean, they're giving us two percent right out of the box, which, you know, is less than we're getting from the, from the medical marijuana, which we're getting three percent.
Yeah, year one, three, year two, three-point-two-five, year three, three and a half percent, so...
Which is really a good deal, you know? And two percent, you know, it's probably, should be higher. But I don't see any reason to delay the implementation for that. I mean, they can adjust that anytime they want.
Well, the other piece, too, is if we delay implementation, we're getting zero percent.
Yeah.
So, you know...
We get, starting in January, we get two percent, and January eighteen, so...
So I'm not in favor of signing on to their entire position. I could see, you know, supporting the idea that the legislature needs to take a look at giving us a better take.
I think that, I agree with that. I think we all agree with that.
Well, I'm going to disagree.
How about enforcement, though?
Enforcement's an issue, because the regulations aren't in place, et cetera. I think it's a reasonable thing to ask. They're going to put the homegrow, they basically certified the vote, so the homegrow goes in, like, next week, virtually.
Yes, that's tomorrow or something, doesn't it? It's tomorrow.
And the regulations really aren't in place.
Yeah, my birthday.
You have to remember that three-person board, the way it's set up, it's, you know, again, through the people who put the provision in. It's just...
The people voted for it, that's another thing.
Right, so these things are going to...
But we're not going against it, we're just saying, you know, when Proposition Two and a half came in, what happened was, if you remember, it came in and they had to go back and fix a lot of it. It makes more sense for them to fix it up front, so this doesn't become a mess.
Well, from a municipal perspective, I don't think they fixed Two and a Half all that great, but that's my own personal carping, I don't know that that's the best example they should be using to compare to this.
Well, because we got to what it was, and for a start, they fixed what it was. Nobody expected what would happen long-term.
You know, I have no use, I just, I want to just relate this to another subject, Obamacare. Let's take Obamacare, right, just for a second, and it's relevant, so let me be there. Obamacare, I don't have much use for, I think it wasn't done very well, I think there's a lot of changes that could be made, and so on and so forth. But the fact of the matter is, if they hadn't pushed it forward, they wouldn't be talking about fixing it now. You know, it would just never have happened. You know what I mean? It would just be nothing, it would never happen, it wouldn't have got there at all. And it is, it is a good idea in a lot of ways, because as we know, it's costing us a fortune, but it does need some work, all right? And so now they're going to be able to do that work, and get the thing fixed to where it has to be. So I let this thing implement, and then, you know, let them work on it afterwards.
Yeah, that's my view as well.
Same principles, the way I see it.
I agree with that.
I disagree.
Okay, do you want to vote on it, or you just want to let it go, then maybe Whiteside can pick it up next week and...
It's up to you guys, I just think you'll find that down the line, within a few months you'll find out that it's going to be a problem.
Well, if that's the case, then we can certainly lobby our legislators then.
Too late.
Nothing, nothing stops, eh, it's not a matter of too late, laws can be amended. Nothing stops, eh, it's not a matter of too late, laws can be amended. That's essentially what they're asking for here.
Because what you're gonna do is you're gonna have the homegrow end up with a black market, and to sell.
It's probably already there, Alan, isn't it?
No, that's fully illegal.
I realize that, but some people don't care.
I think, I think you, the legislature's gonna make some changes on their own anyway, before it gets there.
Believe me, if the sponsors of this legislation find that the homegrow is cutting into their market, they'll be the first screaming at the state house to fix it. Yeah. They'll take care of it for us, we won't have to write any letters, they'll do it all on their own.
Homegrown will be the first thing to be cut out.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry, no more homegrown.
They're gonna buy that stuff, yep.
When it comes to a doll, the state knows how to collect. Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right. Does anybody have any other business not recently anticipated, 48 hours prior to the posting of the meeting? Selectman Scasiotti, any?
No, I did want to make one thing, one announcement, though. Derek, you want to do it, about father bills?
I'll do it on the town administration board.
Make it so, like, it gets out there? No, you want me to do it?
No, I wouldn't.
No, okay.
I hear you, no. Selectman Slavin, any 48 hour?
No, of course not.
You're good. Of course.
Never happened?
Almost never.
Almost, okay. I still have to ask. Okay, town administrators' report.
Thank you, we've gone through most of the information. One of the things that was, that came to me was, because we're speaking about marijuana, and then medicinal marijuana, was why was the town holding up the medicinal marijuana clinic? We did our part a year ago, it's all been all through the DPH now, and they're going through the whole process, so... In fact, it's, I had sent them back in September requesting, you know, what's the, what's the holdup? Because we get 20,000 almost immediately, as soon as that goes through. And then another, then once it's open for the full year, we get the 3%. So if there's anybody advocating for this one to open up, it's us. So we're not holding it up, it looks like if you go to the, the Health and Human Services Division, you'll see a current status of all registered marijuana dispensaries. Feel free to look on there, and it gives all the information, so...
Background, the people that have the permit and stuff had an issue with the state. Their permit got pulled halfway through the process, because there was one elected official that got, like, three or four licenses, and for some reason, they thought this woman's also involved with that. And they had to go back, and it took them almost six months now to get that straightened out, so they're now working to get it done. And they're working on the old, I think it's the Alden Bessie House is where they're gonna be located. But the delay is strictly on their end with the state, not with the town at all.
No.
They actually get their approval now, so they're waiting, now they're gonna start their growing. And you have to grow for six months before you can, before you're allowed to start selling, so...
Sorry, go ahead, Derek.
No, that's, and that's, that's it, so...
That was easy. Okay, liaise on initiative reports. Selectman Scasiotti?
That's it.
Selectman Tropiano?
That's it.
For our usual star, Selectman Slavin.
SERP Ed assessment for Wareham for the coming years, gonna be $94.90 increase to $3,890.84, that's Mr. Sullivan. There was the, I think Derek already has the information, but there's been recent litigation about overtime legislation as far as employees and stuff, whether or not they're salaried or hourly. There's information there on that. Has the case and everything as well. We already got that. Massachusetts, the Senate passed a bunch of housing and reform zoning laws, but the House never did it, the Senate did. So this is coming back again. I'm gonna forward this over to Derek, and we can probably get this over, or Peter, you know, to the zoning group, because there's a lot of really interesting things that's gonna happen with this and not happen, and I think it's gonna help us with what we do with the zoning as well.
The zoning study committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely needs to go to them. And that's kind of what I had there. I'm still waiting for some, a few more details on the actual bus station, whether it's gonna be able to go into Merchant's Way, whether it'll go to, you know, the, one of the malls, or will it actually have the pickup point?
The Gator bus?
Yeah.
This is the length of the Bedford?
It's a Gator system, but it's a Serta bus, going from here to the Bedford. So this, it's in place, it's just a matter of whether or not they want to go ahead. We basically can move ahead and use the station now. It's basically what it amounts to, it's just that we have to provide 1,500 square feet sometime later, which could be anywhere on that road.
There's actually some interesting permutations with that, you might want to talk to Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we can do if you want.
Yep.
Have that ability. And we're not getting anywhere as far as, you know, legal issue.
No.
No.
That's all we got.
Okay, then. I don't think we have any bills or documents to sign, so... You know what time it is?
Motion to adjourn, obviously.
Motion made by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 400. Easy enough. Thank you very much. Good night.